If we can all rise for a moment of silence and a salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you for our standing room audience here and also those at home. This is the August 2nd, 2018, North Hill School District Board Meeting. And we, I just want to note that we did have an executive session this evening prior to holding this meeting, and that was done at the boardroom, and we will not have one afterwards. So, that being said, we can move on to board member comments. Are there any board member comments this evening? Sandy? I'm sorry, Ally, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Did you have your hand up to it? No, Annette, I'm sorry.
Did not.
I'm sorry.
No worries. The first thing I wanted to mention, I have two comments, is that registration is open for the 5th and 6th grade online Spanish pilot course. The registration is open through August 13th, and you can check the North Hills website or contact Dr. Taylor for more information. The second is, I wanted to say that in the spirit of continuing to examine how we can keep our district green and reduce waste, I've asked Dr. Taylor and the administration to look into whether we can eliminate or reduce the use of plastic straws in the cafeterias at the upper grade levels. Plastic straws are not biodegradable, and they're not recyclable, and some cities like Seattle and corporations like Starbucks have been eliminating them. So I'd like to see North Hills go down this path with the understanding that this is probably going to be difficult at the elementary level, and we need to make accommodations for students with special needs.
Thank you.
And that's it.
Annette, did you have?
No.
Nobody? Nobody else? Okay. Thank you. Okay, that being said, we could now move on to the approval of the minutes, and that would be the board meeting of the minutes of May 31st, 2018, the work session and the legislative meeting, and the June 7th, 2018 legislative meeting. Per the attached, I do make that motion.
I so moved.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on that request? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We can now move on to the public comments on agenda items only. I do understand someone has signed up to speak this evening. Do we have some folks that have signed up? Okay. As you make your way up, sir, I'm going to have Mrs. Bender read our policy for speaking, and then when you get the microphone, if you'd be kind enough to state your name and address for the record. Mrs. Bender.
We would like to invite any resident, taxpayer, or employee of the North Hill School District who wishes to address the board to come forward at this time. It is our policy to strongly encourage such public participation inasmuch as it provides the board with an important source of ideas, as well as informs us of many concerns in the district. The board does reserve the right, however, to limit the amount of time allotted for public discussion of any particular speaker or speakers and/or issue, issues, in the interest of preserving an orderly and effective public meeting. Personnel items must be submitted in writing to the board president for consideration five days prior to the board meeting. Some of your concerns can be immediately and quickly addressed following your comments, while others may require more research and discussion. When appropriate, you are welcome to further discuss your concerns with us following this meeting. We appreciate your interest. Sir?
Thank you. My name is Doug Crowley, 208 Goldsmith Road. I have three children in the district, all at Ross Elementary. I'm coming to speak about Agenda Item D1, School Police Operational Guidelines. It's my understanding that the board is to vote on these guidelines tonight, is that correct? And the guidelines that the board is voting on, are these the guidelines that we're voting on here tonight? That the packet labeled School Police Operational Guidelines? Or are you voting on the school fact pack that was also associated with the meeting notice today?
Well, there's operational guidelines. The operational guidelines, for sure.
This is what you're voting on?
I can't see that far.
Yes. I'll hand it to you.
Okay. I'm sure you're right, I just, you know, from the, thank you.
So, I guess my question is, if we're voting on those operational guidelines, as I looked at the fact pack as it relates to those guidelines, they seem like two very, very different documents, and I understand they have a different purpose. So, my question to the board is, you know, prior to voting on this, you know, there's a listing in the guidelines of the primary responsibilities of the police force within the district. Within the fact pack, there is also, what are their primary responsibilities? And if you look at bullet point number three, instructing programs designed to educate students, staff, parents, and community members in the rule of law, crime prevention, drug and alcohol awareness and prevention, and the community safety programs in collaboration with the building principal and the North Hills School Police Chief. I'm wondering where that is in the actual operational guidelines?
It's in the job description. That was approved in June.
But should that not be in the actual operational guidelines?
They work in conjunction with each other. This is, this is an employee handbook, for lack of a better term for it. So, they operate under both documents. One's a little more specific than the other, but that specific item comes specifically out of the job description.
And how about serving as a member of the Building Student Assistance Program?
Also in the job description.
And how about developing working relationship with the community agencies that offer assistance to youth and their families in the areas of mental health and substance abuse?
Job description.
Why is that not in the operational guidelines of the handbook of the, honestly, that's what they're working off of, the guidelines. I understand that's what the job description is, but the guidelines are what they are doing day to day, and I'm not quite sure why that, this information isn't in there. I think these are all great things, and I think they really ought to be in the actual guideline, in the actual handbook, or guidelines themselves, if that's what we're voting on tonight. Also, working in conjunction with the building school principal and police chief and community emergency management agencies to develop plans and strategies to prevent minimized dangerous situations near or on school property and school buildings or involving school students at school-related activities. I think everything that's in this, in this fact sheet, is really well-intended and very valid for what we're doing. I'm fully in favor of this, but I really think that this information actually needs to be in the policy itself. Because as I read that policy, I see an employee walking the halls and really not doing a whole lot of anything, besides making sure that the building is secure and, you know, mitigating any risk associated with, within that building. I don't see any interaction with the students. I don't see any programs dedicated to education within that handbook. All of this, which was sold to us as a bill of goods when this was voted upon in May. And I don't see any of that in the guidelines. So that was really disappointing to see that. I see it in the fact pack, which I'm sure will go as an email to all the parents, saying, okay, this is what the police force is going to do, but in reality, in the actual policy itself, it doesn't have any of that in there. So, I know Dr. Taylor's going to get up and, you know, talk a little here, a little bit about, you know, the safety and security update. I'm hoping he's going to address that, but I would encourage this board to not vote on a policy that's incomplete. Because as far as I'm concerned, the fact pack and the actual policy are two separate documents. I don't understand why the fact pack is more detailed than the actual policy itself. That's concerning to me as a parent.
You're suggesting that this is not detailed enough?
I'm highly suggesting that's not detailed enough, because these four points that I brought up aren't even, aren't even addressed in there whatsoever.
They're in the job description that was approved by the board in June. They work in conjunction with each other. The job description and the operational guidelines work together.
I think it should be in the actual policy and/or handbook that, for, as the contract for employment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that's signed up to speak on the agenda items? Okay. All right, Doug, thank you. We could now move on then to education, and that would be Mrs. Mathis.
Thank you. Dr. Taylor has two presentations this evening. I will introduce them both, and then there'll be time for the board members to ask questions of Dr. Taylor in between the two. The first is a presentation on safety and security updates, improvements that we've made to the district in addition to the hiring, or in addition to the approval of the school police force. And the second is a presentation on communicating digital safety with students and parents. It's been noted that the school iPads contain the YouTube app, which can't be filtered, and since these iPads are being issued to 6th graders, we're working to improve our communications surrounding digital safety and security with parents and teachers. So, thank you, Dr. Taylor.
Thank you. Good evening. My presentation on safety and security updates, I want to preface it, is this is looking at a proactive educational approach, so I'm not actually talking about operational guidelines with school police officers. This is more of an educational approach to safety and security. When we sat down and started working on safety and security, one of the things we wanted to have is obviously a goal. And so, the goal for our safety is that we want students to learn in an environment that's physically and emotionally safe for students and adults. So, everything kind of is aligned to that goal. And educationally speaking, we set out and we created some actions that align to that goal. The first one was to provide high-quality professional development for proactive approaches to school safety. So, we started off in this past summer, and the administrators attended numerous workshops and trainings on school safety, and those are the topics up there. I won't read them to you, I'll let you read yourselves, but the, some of those, I'm going to talk a little bit more detail later on in the presentation, or if you have questions at the end, please let me know. Then during this coming school year, the faculty and staff are going to participate in, you can see a number of professional development workshops on safety and security. The Standing Hook Promise is one again, and the standard response protocols, I will be going into a little bit more detail later on. The second safety action was to provide a high-quality curriculum for students regarding school safety, because students are a part of this equation as well. So they need to be a part of the discussions around safety. Students cannot learn unless they feel safe. So, we have a number of ways that we're making sure that we address school safety with our students. We're going to present Standing Hook Promise lessons in our curriculum, bullying prevention lessons, visual safety citizenship, go through some new drills that we'll be doing. We have positive school-wide behavior assemblies where we talk about being safe, culture diversity is in our socialized curriculum, and then we have the Attorney General's Office come in, and they do an excellent job doing assemblies on cyber safety with our children. The third action item is providing school safety information to our parents and guardians. In doing so, we're going to have the Standing Hook Promise lessons and digital safety lessons and information on new drills. Those are all going to be communicated through parent workshops, website, peach jar app, lots of different ways, and that will be ongoing throughout the school year that we'll have information available to parents. So, one of the things that I want to talk about is the standard response protocol. What we had previously in our safety plan was a series of different kinds of drills, and we used kind of, different kind of language depending on which building you're in. So we might say code blue, and that means an evacuation, or this building is a code red, that means a lockdown. Somebody might just say lockdown. So what we decided we had to do was to make sure that everyone was saying and using the same language, not just in our school district, but with our police officers, our firemen, our EMS, all those people had to use the same terminology. So, we had a training that I coordinated about a week ago, and we had all of those folks come to A.W. Beatty, had a big room, had about 80 people, our entire administrative team was there, and we had a training on the standard response protocol. I won't go over all the details with you, but basically, we are now getting rid of like the code reds and the code blues, and we're going to very simple, common language. Lockout, lockdown, evacuate, shelter, and hold. So, every single officer, fireman, teacher, and all the adults in the area will all know what these things mean. There are roles and responsibilities for students and the teacher, and this poster will be in every single classroom, in all the common areas throughout all the schools. So if you're a parent and you're walking in and you hear "hold" over a loudspeaker, principal says "hold," you can just look at the wall in the cafeteria and you know what that means. So we're all using the same information. The Standing Hook Promise program is something new that we're doing as well, and it is a research-based school violence prevention program. And what we're doing is using two parts of it called Say Something and Start With Hello. Say Something, excuse me, it teaches children how to say something, how to protect themselves, their classmates, and their community to help prevent violence, suicides, and threats. And there are three steps to this. It's very simple. We're going to teach our teachers how to use this, and we're going to teach our students how to use this. Number one is look for the warning signs, signals, and threats. There's typically, the majority of the time, there's a threat in the school, there are warning signs, it's just they weren't found ahead of time. So we're going to teach people how do you look for those warning signs. Number two, act immediately and take it seriously. And number three, say something to a trusted adult so that if a student needs help, we can get the help that they need. One of the areas where we see a lot of those early warning signs is on social media. So that's the primary source of all those signals and threats. So what we're doing is, we're trying to educate our students and our teachers to think about what they do on social media. So again, this is a poster I created, and it will also be in every single classroom throughout the whole district, and it just serves as a visual reminder of what you need to do with social media, thinking about it, is it true, hurtful, illegal, necessary, and is it kind? And again, it's going to be kind of an ongoing conversation with our students in different courses, computer science courses and socialized courses, to remind students about how to use social media appropriately. The other part of the Standing Hook Promise program is Start With Hello. And again, this is a research-based program, and it's very simple, three steps. You see someone alone, reach out and help them, and you start with hello. It's that simple. There are actually a lot more deeper lessons involved and curriculum involved in all of these programs, and what we did is this past summer, as we sat down with teams of teachers and guidance counselors, we took those lessons and we wrote them into our curriculum, so that all the students are getting the same consistent message, no matter what elementary school they're in, the secondary schools, they're all going to have the same message because of that curriculum document. The Standing Hook Promise Professional Development for our faculty and staff starts off with an overview on the 14th August, where every single employee will learn a little bit about Standing Hook Promise. So that includes your custodians, your food service, your computer technicians, your secretaries, every single person are going to get an overview of that program. And then a more detailed, in-depth approach for the secondary elementary faculty will happen in August and September, and students, we're going to have lessons throughout the curriculum, and they're going to be spiled throughout the school year, so it's not just a, kind of like a one-and-done presentation. We want them to always be thinking about that. High school students are actually going to take an online mini-course, and they're going to then write a reflection in English class about what they learned in that online course. I want to acknowledge the fact that I have been very, very blessed to work with four wonderful women in our community, and Tracy, Jocelyn, Lisa, and Casey have been working with me for the last four or five months now, and I just wanted to thank them publicly for all the work they've done with Standing Hook Promise and trauma-based classrooms. And just a quick reminder, we have eliminated the open campus concept in our secondary school, so now, before, when students used to leave the high school and come over here for class, they're not doing it anymore, now all high school classes are scheduled in the high school, middle school classes are scheduled in the middle school. Are there any questions? Arlene?
In both of these presentations that you made, it says budget impact. There is nothing written for that. Do you have any idea what the budget impact of all this will be?
The Standing Hook Promise program is free, completely free, so it doesn't cost you a dime, and there are no, I would say, hard costs associated with any of those lessons. It's just time.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Anything else about this part?
That's good. Thanks, Jeff.
All right, I will move on to the second presentation now. The second presentation, as Mrs. Mathis had mentioned, was about communicating digital safety with students and parents, and that's a really important topic in today's age. So, we have Project Connect, this is a quick reminder, I'm not going to read that to you, but we have goals for Project Connect where we give all students in grades 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10 an iPad, and then they have curriculum aligned to that, use of that iPad, and specific project-based learning tools they use there. However, giving every student a mobile device, we have a responsibility to make sure that students and parents know more about digital safety. So that's what we're going to be doing. Communicating to students, we're going to have assemblies. We have integrated digital safety into our curriculum. We have students taking online interactive digital course in digital safety as a part of their class in middle school, so every single middle school student goes through a course. They have to take an online class as a part of a face-to-face class on digital safety. We integrated it into our high school health curriculum on cyberbullying, and then all the lessons are also in our high school guidance counseling curriculum as well, where counselors go into classrooms and talk about digital safety, social media, cyberbullying, and those kind of things with our students. We also have a website that I'm in the process of creating, and on this website, it's going to have a bunch of topics for students, and we'll always reference the website when we meet with students in lessons and presentations. So some of the topics that they'll have on there, and there'll be research-based articles and videos and different information for students to go on and learn more about, you know, things like technology addiction, or appropriate uses of YouTube, or other streaming services. So all that will be on our new website. For parents, we're going to start hosting in conjunction with Northland Library, parent workshops on digital safety, and I'll be meeting with those folks, and I'll be presenting to the public on courses on digital safety on Saturday mornings. And then we have security resource pages on the district's website. I'm going to create some cheat sheets that will be fun, and it'll be about free and inexpensive internet filtering at home. So if you don't have internet filtering at home and you have a child with a mobile device, you might want to look into that, because obviously, there's a lot of things out there you don't want them to have access to. We're going to have periodic tips for parents in all of our district communication avenues, and then we have updated our Project Connect parent handbook to include some more information about digital safety, so that when they get that, they can look over what some tips are. Also, I'm creating a frequently asked questions webpage for digital safety for parents. And so what I did was I went out and I looked at, what are those important questions that parent might have that maybe they don't know who to ask, or where to go to get the information? So I just put a couple up there. You know, what age should my child be before I allow them to access social media? Or, what should I do when other people post photos of my child online? So I'll have some based on best practices, answers to all those for you, or, and/or video clips that show you what parents can do for that. In school, when they're here, we do a lot for digital safety. We have internet filtering in all of our schools, and we're actually looking at, right now, we're implementing a new, it's called man-in-the-middle technologies, I know people, when I first heard that, I thought, what exactly does that mean? But what it is, is basically, in layman's terms, is when the internet comes in and a student does a search on Google, we can't right now, it's encrypted, it's just the way Google works. So what happens is, man-in-the-middle gets that encrypted search, de-kind of crypts it, tells us what it is, and then if it's something that is of concern, an alert is automatically sent to somebody in our staff, and then they can go and say, Lindsay, why do you, why did you search bomb threats? Why did you search this? And you might have a perfectly good reason for why you did that, but, so we'll have alerts now, we're just implementing it this year. We have tools that allow us to manage all the students' iPads and restrict apps, so they can't download certain things. Teachers will be able to randomly search student internet histories and notify principals and parents if anything that's inappropriate, and then if we find inappropriate things, then obviously, there may be disciplinary consequences if you're misusing that device outside for educational purposes. Are there any questions? I want to do that quickly.
I have some questions.
Sure.
That man-in-the-middle technology, who will be making the determination about what sort of things are of concern?
It goes to our technology department, and then they forward it to the principals.
Okay. And then the principals would be ultimately saying, that's not a concern, or that's, that it's...
Correct.
Is there, just one more question. Is there going to be any discussion of, I mean, we have these protections in place, but I would imagine that clever children will be able to, you know, at least try to, you know, break them down. Is there going to be discussion of why they might not want to do that on their, you know, on their school device, or in general, as far as, you know, maybe this is not the place to practice hacking, you know, YouTube or whatever?
Yes. That's a part of our digital citizenship, and we talk about hacking, and, yes, we do talk about it.
Okay.
Good question. Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Anybody else?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff? Thank you very much.
We have several other items under education this evening, so bear with me. The first is a request for the board to approve the 2018 to 2019 Waterfront Learning Annual Agreement. Waterfront Learning serves as an option for students in the online academy at North Hills to take online courses that are not currently developed and taught by our teachers. Next is a request that the board approve the 2018 to 2019 Day Student Agreement with Glade Run Lutheran Services and St. Stephen's Academy. Glade Run provides special educational instruction for students referred by the district pursuant to an IEP developed jointly by Glade Run, the district, and the student's family. The services are provided as needed. Next are a request to approve the revised 2018 to 2019 handbooks for actually K through 6, middle school and high school. Amongst other changes in here, we've added information with the mission statement for the school police and school wellness information. And last, we have a request that the board approve a new textbook adoption for 2018 to 2019. The new textbook is for a new cybersecurity and the law course, and it will be $1,809.03 for 20 copies. So the superintendent recommends an ISO move that the board approve education items 3 through 8.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, dear. Next, we can move on to Mrs. Spade, Support Services.
Thank you. I have two items. The first one is School Police Operational Guidelines. The second one is Ratification of the Award of Bids for the Westview Elementary Captured Superintendent recommends an ISO move that the board approve Support Services Items 1 and 2.
Second.
Okay. Do we have any discussion? Mrs. Bender?
Okay. Mrs. Spade, you talked about the ratification of the awards relative to Westview. The first, the School Police Operational Guidelines, you didn't speak about that. Is that what we were referring to at the beginning of the meeting here?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Which is attached to, by the way.
Pardon me?
Documents.
It's attached.
Yeah, I see this. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
I had a comment. The comments that you made at the beginning of the meeting kind of made me realize that those of us that have been spending a lot of time on this and doing our homework on it, kind of have it in our minds that both the job description and the policies and procedures work together, but you made me realize that that's not necessarily clear to other folks. So, what I was going to suggest is, how about if we just simply append the job descriptions to the policy and procedures?
We can very easily do that.
Then it makes it really clear that those two documents work together, and if someone wants to go ahead and download those documents and look at them, then you're seeing the whole picture.
That makes sense.
That's easy. Thank you. Are there any other?
I had, I had one more thing. With respect to the point number two, actually, I was wondering if we could talk about a little bit of a timeline for that project?
For item number two?
Yeah, the...
Yeah. So it went to bid, like around 4th of July.
Yeah.
Sorry. It went to bid around 4th of July, so we kind of ran into some of those things as well. So, we have all the materials in place, this is awarding the bids that had already been signed off on, so construction was, destruction was supposed to have begun this week, and I haven't been over there to see whether it did or it did not. So, basically, if you're familiar with the entrance of Westview, there's a flower bed to the left of the entrance to the school, and that's where the captured vestibule is going to go. So, between now and the beginning of school, that area is going to be demoed, a cement pad poured, and then the structure will be built on there. They won't break into the school, where the door will go into the office, until a little bit later, but it's supposed to be done, enclosed by September 7th. So that's kind of the plan in place. So the opening of school, the entrance to Westview will be the same as it always was. It doesn't interfere with the entrance, which is a good thing. So you'll enter the building, and the office is to the left. After September 7th, that will be the locked door, you'll enter the vestibule, you get buzzed into the office, just as we do in other buildings. So, that's where it is, but the good news is, we have the materials, we have the contractor, we have everything operating, and, you know, if we get some good luck with weather and some different things, that timeline could shift earlier because of the nature of the project.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
May I just add, based on a conversation that we had, that the construction isn't going to take place during school hours, and that the construction workers all have their clearances also.
They do.
Thank you for that. Any other questions?[1768.12]
I have a comment. First of all, I would like to say that I will be voting no on number one of Support Services. I have not voted for anything in relation to the police department in our school. I still believe in my heart that we are going too fast, we're moving too fast. I enjoy the presentation that Dr. Taylor gave us. Been reading an awful lot about it, where they are telling you, they, meaning whoever's reporting from different school districts, that the districts are taking their time. To me, education is the way to begin. But, so therefore, I do have to vote no for this, because I don't think we're giving it enough time. Thank you.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Just Mrs. Bender? Is that?
Right.
Okay. Do you have that right?
But I'm okay relative to the ratification for Westview.
Number two. Thanks, Mrs. Bender.
And in voting aye, we're going to append the...
Append that, yeah.
The job description. Okay. Thank you.
For sure. Okay. Thank you. And now, Mrs. Cazaro, I think you're up with Athletics and Activities.
Yeah, there is one item, the North Hills High School and Middle School Student-Athlete Handbook. And the, my agenda item is that the board approve this, the North Hills High School and Middle School Parents' Student Athletic Handbook for the 2018-19 year, and it's attached to the online agenda. And so, the superintendent recommends an ISO move that, I lost my thing.
Okay.
That the board approve Athletics and Activities, item one.
Thank you. Is there...
Sorry.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
One thing.
Thank you. And let's move on to, I guess we've got Personnel now. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. August. The Personnel items are discussed in detail in the executive session, and therefore, the superintendent recommends an ISO move that we, that the board approve Personnel Items one through six.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on those items?
I'm a little confused.
Okay.
Okay? And basically, I'm confused because I can't find it, to be honest with you.
What's that?
And that is that we are hiring this evening three police officers that have been...
No, we're not.
Oh. I thought that's what you said. Okay. Well, then, the other, the other thing was making Dean the head. That's here.
That's there.
Okay. I am...
That's under change of status.
Okay. I am, at this point in time, again, voting no. It's not against Dean. He's a very good man, and he has done an awful lot to help this district. I just have a difficult time accepting the fact that more guns will help save more lives. So, I am going to be voting no for that particular one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bender. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with change of status, voting no, Mrs. Bender. Okay. Now, we can move on to Community and Intergovernmental Relations. That would be Mrs. Reed.
Okay. Bear with me. Okay. First on the agenda we have here, a memorandum of understanding to be with Northgate School District. And basically, what it is, that they asked us to be prepared to assist with the relocation and sheltering of Northgate students in the event an emergency occurs, that Northgate students have to evacuate their building during school hours. Now, before I make a motion for this, I would like to say a few things. First of all, I guess everybody here has heard, within the last three weeks, it's all over, that Northgate is merging with us. And people called me, I told them, we have never said the word "Northgate" in our meetings, in executive session, anything. So, when I opened up this agenda and I saw "Northgate," I went, uh-oh. So, I started making some inquiries. This here has nothing to do with them ever merging with us. This is not giving them a step in the front door. This is just being a good neighbor and helping them in time of need. Now, Northgate's biggest problem is, they don't have school buses. So, therefore, they have to rely upon other districts. And therefore, if this would occur, they would be able to use up to 10 of our buses to bring them up here. Now, my concern was, and I talked to Dr. Manarino about this, what if this is a homeland security issue? This is all the buildings. This is us, too. Why would we bring them up here? We're just creating further problems for our students. If that would be the case, they would not come. If it would involve those schools, then we wouldn't be bringing them up here. Because my main concern is our students first, that we protect them and we don't add to the problems. So, I wanted to make that perfectly clear, that this has nothing to do with any merger, not putting their front foot in a door, whatever. It just happens to be that they need, possibly need some help with an evacuation. Hopefully, we never have to use it. But it's there if, if it be. Okay. That's it. Does anybody have any questions?
Well said, Mrs. Reed. Thank you. Good. Thank you. Any other questions?
Just one more. Go ahead. It's not just our school that would be helping on Northgate, right? It's other schools that...
Pardon me?
There are other schools involved with helping Northgate.
Well, that's my concern. I was told that the, there's other schools, but it's only verbal with them.
No, they're doing the same thing with the other schools.
Oh, they're going, I asked if they were going to do an MOU.
No, I don't know if they've done them, but...
But it's still an agreement.
Are they going to do an MOU? See, I'm only going by what I know. As of tonight, sitting here, the other school districts with Northgate, it's verbal. Now, when they have their meetings, if they...
No. We had a verbal agreement with them for years on the same plan, but we felt as though, we should probably put this down in writing. So, we did that. They also have verbal agreements with Pine Ridge, and North Allegheny, and Shaler in similar situations. If they're going to formalize it, I don't know. That's not our business in either direction. All I know is that if they're in need, and they need our help, and they need our buses, this document says that we'll help them. And we should, we're their neighbor. So, that's what that piece is. But the relationships that they have with other school districts, I don't think we know and/or should be commenting on them.
Okay. But to the best of your knowledge, they just have a verbal agreement with them, with the other school districts?
I don't know what they have.
Okay. Does that help you, Mrs. Cazaro?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Now, let me get back to what I was doing.
We're moving on to EMSA contract?
I have to get out of here.
Got that?
My fat finger isn't working. Okay. Here we go. Next on the agenda is, we need to renew the contract with Russ Westview EMS. We do this yearly, so this is nothing new. Any questions in regard to these?
Nope. So, we need a motion.
Make a motion. My fat finger don't work. Okay. I move that the board approve Community and Intergovernmental Relations Items one and two.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on Items one and two? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Before we go any further, I skipped over Beatty because there was nothing there. Do you have anything that you want to add about Beatty? Is there anything? I know it's summertime.
Well, just the fact, yeah. But we'll be meeting in August.
Okay.
And Dr. Manarino, do you know, off the top of your head, how many students?
I know the last check was over 700. So, you know, and that's again, larger than they have been, maybe...
Ever.
Ever, yeah. It's been a long time since they've topped that number.
And I think it's just wonderful because of what is happening and what people are realizing relative to the, first of all, the education you receive at Beatty, and second of all, what individuals in, who are leaving high school need in order to go on. And it's not necessarily a four-year degree.
Right.
You know, this, this senior class at Beatty is so large that we will not be able to hold the graduation here like we have the last two years, that it's going to go to a venue that has a larger auditorium, because they're significantly larger than last year, and we packed this one pretty much to the, to the end. So, that's good news for them.
That is good news. That is good news. Thank you.
And that's basically all.
Good. Thank you. All right. We don't have anything under legislative or policy this evening, so we're going to move to Finance. That would be Dr. Knowles.
Okay. Thank you. We have seven action items and then, two informational items. So, our action items are the General Fund Bills, the Construction Fund Bills, Capital Project Fund Bills, Food Service Fund Bills, the Scholarship Fund Bills, Budget Transfers, and Payroll for the Months of June and July 2018. And there is nothing unusual or unexpected in any of those. The informational items are Revenue Summary for 2017-18, and that was of May 2018, unaudited. And the second informational item is the Summary of Revenue and Expenditures for 2017-18 of May 2018. And that just has the expenditures in addition to the revenue. The superintendent recommends an ISO move that Finance Items one through seven be, that the board approve Finance Items one through seven.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now down to the closing of the meeting, but before we do that, is there anybody in the public that would like to make additional public comments before we close the meeting? There being none?
I have something. I want to just clarify something that Mrs. Bender had said, where she asked about, I thought we were hiring three officers. So, we completed final round interviews with three candidates today.